Thank you for coming to the school committee. Let's start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right off the bat, we're going to go into executive session. We have two things to cover tonight. Do I have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Where open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the committee pursuant to match general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Mrs. Betts, seconded it. Now we need a roll call. We'll start over there, Mrs. Betts.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go into executive session to discuss the collective bargaining process, and then we're going to come out for the purposes of going into another executive session before our primary meeting, which is starting at seven. I'm looking over there for, I'm right, right?
Yeah.
Just making sure.
We can't vote back twice now?
No.
Can we vote twice so we can stay?
Well, we can find out in a minute.
Can I add it?
You could do both at the same time. So...
Want me to amend it?
Yeah, we'll just amend the one we just did, so we have collective bargaining personnel matters.
Yeah.
And we'll be back at seven. Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry, you would need another roll call?
We do. Okay. I need another roll call, so...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. School committee, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, in case anyone here didn't realize, we actually started at six, had some executive sessions to get out of the way. But welcome to the new school year. This is our, it's a late start for us, but everybody else has been going. So here we go again, another year. Comments from the community. I see a few folks out there. Yep. Just give your name for the record and...
Hi, I'm Justin Kearney. I have students in both Plymouth South Middle and High School now. I was here a little under a year ago. Thank you guys for helping get recess free instated for the fifth graders at the middle school. In that conversation, one of the other things that was supposed to happen was lunch for the fifth graders be brought back in line with lunch for the other elementary schools. And as of the end of the school year last year, it had not been done. I kept sending my daughter in every once in a while with money to buy lunch, and she'd get charged the $2.75.
I think I followed up on that, and I think it was resetting the machine. Dr. Maestas, you...
You're here.
The update is it got reset, but they were putting it back.
I'll put you online.
Is this on? This is my phone?
How's that? How's that? I don't think so.
Oh, stop that. The computer system that actually manages the school lunch program at the middle school, primarily South Middle School, was adjusted to be able to make that adjustment about a month before the end of the school year. It was reset, so students for a short period of time were charged that default rate, which they were charged at the end of the year. The students that were actually charged wound up getting a refund for that amount of money that they were overcharged. So either that or it was credited to their... So that's what, that's what our food service director indicated to us at central office.
I'll just say, it wasn't all once that she bought lunch. It was periods, like it's, once every other month, we let them buy at school. And every time she bought, it was $2.75. I did get an email from Mr. Morgan Wick indicating that it was corrected again. A refund was credited to our daughter's account, which we don't have an account. I mean, she brings in cash, and it's so infrequent, the account doesn't make sense. And then a couple, maybe a week or two before the end of the school year, we did it again, and she again was charged $2.75. The account wasn't looked at to see that there was a refund on the account. I mean, she's a fifth grader, she's not going to stand up and say, "No, there's, should be money there, please check," and all that other stuff. So I'm just concerned that it really is either bouncing back and forth that much, or it's just really not completely taken care of.
So, Mr. Costin, you can just work on that.
Sure. We, I'll speak loud, too. We also upgraded our terminals this year. We had an issue, every time they were being reset, the software would go back to the default, which was the higher price. We've outfitted all of our school district cafeterias with new touch terminals to replace the old ones because they were not being supported anymore. And also to come in line with our new Zobrio software, which the town, town has implemented, which is deposit software. So that should not be happening this year.
Okay.
They should all be in line with the elementary prices.
Okay.
What I will do, Mr. Kearney, is tomorrow I'll check with our food service director to make sure that things are operational and that that default is set, so it stays. And I know, like Mr. Costin said, we do have a new point-of-sale system at the, at all our schools, so hopefully we won't have this issue again. But your point was, we did work on it last year, we thought it was resolved. When it came up, I'm not sure if you brought it up, or Mr. Morgan Wick brought it up, I became aware of it, and we told him, "Why is this happening?" And you're absolutely right, it was happening. But from my understanding, it was a sporadic moment in time, not, maybe it just happened to coincide when your daughter was buying lunch cash, but it shouldn't have happened.
Okay. And then, just because we do buy so infrequently, I mean, I'll send Mr. Morgan Wick a letter, I'm just looking to get what's in there.
Sure.
Because I think that the lunch people are just trying to process the kids so fast. They see the kids that come and buy lunch on credit all the time, and they assume credit and process it, but the kids that they don't see, they assume cash and don't even look at the credit.
And they'd have to have, I think the other issue, too, is they'd have to know and distinguish between a fifth grader and a sixth grader?
Right. Well, there's a credit on the account, period, so at this point, she's at the higher price anyways, but it's just getting that money used, really.
I will definitely talk to our food service director tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was helpful. Now we're going to start with comments from our student representatives, and first we have Plymouth South. Veronica?
Hi. So, the biggest thing that's going on right now at South is actually, Mrs. Frye is away this week. It's actually very exciting. She's at the National Principals Convention of some sort. She is one of the three finalists for National Principal of the Year. So we are so proud of her, no matter how many times she says it's no big deal. We are so proud of what she's done, and we're really glad that she's there, even though we'll miss her this week. Also, the new schedule, everything's going well, there's a good adjustment, everyone's getting used to it very well. I personally love it, I think it's great, we get an extra period, get to take another class, and also we get to, it's only four classes a day, so the day seems to move much faster this way. Our fall sports are underway, there's North vs. South soccer tonight, which I already heard a few of you commenting on, sorry, had to miss it. And despite the displacement from our fields because of construction, practices at Forges are going very well, and we're glad we were able to use those fields. Last Wednesday, we had a social media speaker, and she was very good. She spoke to our grades ten and eleven, because we couldn't get the whole school in to see it, but it's my understanding that it went very well, and it was very influential on those kids. Last week, we also had a grade-nine club fair, club and activities fair, and pretty much the freshmen, there was a table set up for every different activity in the gym, and they got to see different activities and sign up for them, what they want to do, and it was good. One of the president of the student body spoke, and she told them how important it is to get involved in clubs and stuff, so that was awesome. Also, we, construction is underway at South, as I already said. We're really excited about the new school. You can barely even tell, but apparently they are working over there on it.
(laughing).
And groundbreaking is scheduled for the 24th, which is next Thursday, so I'm excited for that. And lastly, our open house is on October 1st.
Very good. Thank you. Isabel?
So Plymouth North High School is now on social media. So on Twitter, we are @PlymouthNorthHS. And September 15th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM at Plymouth North High School, is the first meeting of the year for the boosters club. And then, last week, we had the same social media presentation. Caitlin Leclerc Clear, who is a CEO and presenter, she came to our school on September 9th, and she had a very influential presentation about social media and the effects that it can have. And one of our students, who's a junior at North, Emily Meyer, she was accepted into the Macy's Great American Marching Band.
Ooh.
So she'll be marching at the Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City, so that's very The annual college fair will be held on Tuesday, October 13th, at 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Plymouth South High School. And the Plymouth Public Schools has a computerized point-of-sale payment system for all school meals, including breakfast, and every student will have their own personal meal account based on a new alternate student ID number, which each student will receive. Students can access their account number at the pinpads located at every register, and it's recommended that students remember their alternate IDs, because then they can, this will make meal lines move faster. And our homecoming tickets are now on sale before and after school, so they will be on sale at lunches, and we're having our homecoming, the set date for now is October 3rd, but there has been discussion of that date changing to coincide with one of the pep rallies. So on October 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30, there will be a Plymouth North High School open house. And at Panera Bread, there is a French exchange program that will be hosting there, and it's on September 16th, at 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And all of their sales will be donated to, 10 to, sorry, 10 to 20 percent of the sales will be donated to Plymouth North High School, and then the rest of it will go to the French exchange program. And the National Merit Scholarship Committee has named Griffin McNamie a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship, so congratulations to him for this very distinctive achievement.
Very good. That's very good. A lot going on, we just got started. That's great. Very good. Thank you, both of you. Next, we have old business. Do we have any updates for any old business? I know we have some new business. Ms. Badger?
I just wanted to bring, I know I've talked to Dr. Maestas and a couple other people about the kindergarten placement this year, and I know we have a lot of students, and we have a lot of, you know, a lot of moving parts with new kids coming in and not registering until the end, but I didn't, I just wanted to put it on the radar to maybe start working towards uniform kindergarten enrollment throughout the district. I think that we have the enrollment piece, but some people are getting old information, and then some people are, have information nights in June, and some people have, don't go until the start, like the day before school starts. So I think a lot of that's creating confusion among people who live in different parts of the town, as well as, I know, I know that it's really difficult to get schedules out, but if we could tell parents if they're AM and PM, I know I had a lot of parents, not just my cousin, come to me and wanted to know whether her kid was AM or PM before, you know, two weeks, I think would have been helpful, especially, I know the way some of the preschool classes work, if you go in the morning, you're there till noon if you're there, so if you've got some younger siblings or whatever, so, bring up.
So the action item you're looking for is?
Just, I think making sure that we, more standard kindergarten enrollment procedures, I would say.
I think we do have them, it's just a matter of how they're communicated. We have an agreed-upon date, and I'm very adamant with the principals that schedules will be released on a specific date. I review that with them, because the last thing that I want is a school in one part of town gets schedules three days, a week before the other parts of town. So we've tried to uniform that, make that uniform. The other thing that I think would be helpful is if all this information that you're conveying tonight is available for people to have access to, and maybe on the front door of the building in the summer.
Yeah.
That parents would, you know, they come to the school.
Yes.
Maybe if you would like information regarding the start date, and information regarding your class, your, you know, when lists are coming out, other pertinent information, go to this portion of the website. And then school hours, because keep in mind that our school, our elementary school offices aren't open all summer long. There's hours for them, and they would have to come and seek that information. Keep in mind that if any parent has any question or concern regarding anything that happens in the summer, they can call my office, they can call the principal, somebody is there from 8:00 to 3:30 all summer long. So, you know, we can put that on the notice as well, but if people need to get information, they can try to get, they can do the best to get ahold of our office.
I think the big part there, too, is, you know, some people in, which I think that would help clarify, if they go up to the front door, because, you know, people in West, they have, I don't know if it was a cookout, or they had something, and then some other school did this, and another school did this, and so different parents in the area talk, and they're like, "I know my cousin was like, 'My school isn't doing anything, I haven't heard anything.'" So she was a little bit concerned about that. So, I mean, obviously, every school has their own culture and climate, and, you know, they have their own thing, so obviously, we don't want that. But putting it out in front of them, letting them know, this is, you can expect this, I think would be helpful. As well as, I know the AM and PM situation, where kids are moving in and moving out and everything like that, but I don't know if there's an earlier date that we can say, "Okay, here, beginning of July," or beginning of, I'm not beginning of July, beginning of August, you're AM.
Well, there's two, there's two big dilemmas for us with that. One is busing, and that's our biggest dilemma, is getting our bus schedules and routes arranged. The other issue is student enrollment, and I know this is difficult for some to...
I get it.
To grasp. One summer, we had sixty new enrollments at one of our elementary schools, and that was, and it's very difficult to have class sets and classes set up, because we, there's so much transition. Where some parents are really good at, you know, registering their kid on the times that we have set up for screening, a lot of parents, not a lot of parents, but there are parents that move to town, or parents that don't follow the schedule of screenings that we offer, so it's really difficult to narrow down exactly what those class lists are. So we try to make it as soon as we possibly can, but we will always look at that date to make sure that we can get those out sooner or later. Again, this issue will not be an issue if we have full day K.
Exactly, and that's what I told everybody who said something to me, I was like, "Just keep thinking good thoughts about full day K." And you won't have this problem with your next kid.
It would, probably, two-thirds of the issues that you brought up tonight would be eliminated by having that, because then it would be consistent of how we do all the mailings, the AM, PM, the registrations, the open houses, all that would be consistent.
Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Sorenson?
It's a different topic, so Ms. Hunt, have you still on this topic?
Actually, different, but it kind of piggybacks, too, so it's up to you.
Up to him, he's the chair.
Ms. Hunt, go ahead, if you kind of relate.
Yeah, well, it kind of does. So I am, I was torn whether or not to bring this up under newer old business, but I don't think it's listed as old business, but we did bring, or I did bring it up at our retreat. Same thing with Ms. Badger, I've been hearing a lot of comments from parents, and a lot of frustration revolves around the school supply lists as well, like beyond complaints. And I understand that every teacher does something different, but if you've ever gone to Walmart on the first day of school, or Staples, you'll understand what everyone's talking about. And I'm wondering if there isn't any way you can just, like, and it's, I think it's probably worse than high school, because the elementary school teachers are really good about sending out a list of supplies that they need, but at the high school level, and you guys can probably understand this, even if you can say, "Okay, a general concession is the science teachers need this," but, you know, everybody's got a different size, you can't buy binders the first week of school. So a lot of parents were wondering if we could get some kind of a generic list, even at the, like, at the end of school, you have all summer, you have sales, you're not running out on the first day of school, you have all summer to stock up. I myself spent almost a hundred dollars a kid on binders and notebooks and school supplies the first day of school, and I was there at, like, at Walmart at midnight, so, and I know that I've, I've been getting a lot of complaints, so I don't know if it's something you can look at, get some kind of a generic list by subject that we could put out at the beginning of the summer. And then maybe if other teachers have specific things, then it's not going to be so bad for us, for us parents, but it's just a suggestion that maybe we could look at for next year. I think it's probably one of the biggest frustrations parents have.
Well, I would say that most schools are in that position...
They're laughing, because you know, you've been there, too.
You can't walk into Walmart or Staples the day of, first day of school.
No, but we have to, because my, at least my children are saying, "But I have to have them tomorrow." And maybe that's not the true perception, but really, I, it's, it's not fun.
We can, what we can do is bring it up to PCD and see what the principals can come up with a common...
Yeah.
...way of addressing it to help.
Because everybody needs either a one-inch, or one-and-a-half-inch, or two-inch.
I just have a closet of everything.
Yeah, well, you're smart.
It's funny, my, if my wife is watching right now, she's probably smiling, because we have four kids. So when they were all going at the same time, she would buy in advance, and we have a closet where we have all binders loosely, we have, like, every variation that a teacher could ask for, pencils, pens, erasers.
Yeah, but they're used, Dad.
So she would, she would get them off-season, you know, so...
Binders are expensive.
Kudos to my wife.
All right. Now that we've started this, this is terrible. Let me dovetail that, that comment, because we have the technology now that the oldest child should bring home the forms for the emergency card, the contacts, and it doesn't have to be, I have five, okay? I have five, so it was, the first day of school was really difficult. We could do it once, perhaps, and put it on, and cover it that way, because we're on this topic.
Yep, well, they've greatly, they've greatly reduced it.
It wasn't as bad this year.
But, but it's still, it's still something that needs improvement, because you still get four or five, we used to get like ten, but now you get like four or five that are asking same stuff, name and address, contact information, things like, and that's all captured somewhere in Aspen or somewhere else.
We will, we have some, our technology data people, we'll, we'll see what they can do to help us with this.
It's getting closer.
I just think this is one, this is one thing that we can do to relieve some of the frustration for the parents.
Hey, I'm hearing you loud and clear.
This is a, this is a beautiful...
This is an easy one.
This topic is a beautiful opportunity to pull you guys both into the conversation, so...
I know they're at Walmart the first day of school.
You just went through the first few weeks of school, did you feel you had enough time, or better, did your parents think that they had enough time to get you your supplies and everything?
I went on the first day of school after work, and Target, there was absolutely nothing on the shelves. Walmart, there was absolutely nothing, so I had to wait until the next week, and then go and, like, pick through, like, the leftovers.
There was only pink binders at Walmart, which my son really appreciated.
It's because I got them the couple of weeks before.
There was only pink.
It's because I got them the couple of weeks before.
How about you, Veronica?
Well, what I think is, at least for me, this year, I think once you get up to, like, junior, senior year, you have more flexibility with what you choose to organize yourself with. Even sophomore year, I think you have some flexibility. So some of it, like when the teachers say you need this, they'll later say, "You don't really need this, you, it's up to you." They don't enforce the binder keeping so much, once you get up into older grades, and if you don't need it, you don't have to get it. I found that a pocket folder, like an accordion folder, that I reuse year to year, works very well for me, so I didn't actually have to get much new this year, but I know my sisters did need some new stuff, so I can see what you're saying, and in past years, it has been like that.
If you're a little rule follower, they're going to do what they're told.
Very good. Very good, good conversation. Dr. Sorenson?
We have an old business item that's been here on the scholarship application process, and just to bring the committee up to date, last year, we did some fact-finding, and at the end of the school year, we, I had a meeting with the central office and the principals and assistant principals, and Mr. Halpin was at the meeting as well. So what I'm asking now, are we going to receive a report through the central office of the changes in the application process for scholarships at some point early this year?
Yeah, I will talk with Mr. Halpin and the members that were in that meeting to do an executive summary of changes that will be rolled out for this year. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we could eventually get that off the old business list.
Good, okay. Isn't Sean, Sean going to be here tonight?
Uh, no.
No, okay. All right.
I'm presenting those, so...
Any other new business? Yep?
He talked about it. No.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
No? Okay. Then it's time for the superintendent's report.
Yes, tonight, I have a few items to report on. We, we're off to a good start. I think many of you are aware that some of our buildings last week, and the week before, dealt with some warm temperatures, and keep in mind that we do have a few of our schools that do not have air conditioning, and it was a challenge. So we, we did everything we could. I'd just like to, to thank our students and staff for their resilience, because it was, there were some days that were pretty, pretty warm. So hopefully, we can enjoy cooler temperatures, but it was very humid, and it was a little bit of a challenge. Last week, we had Ms. Greer here in the district, and she went around to our secondary schools and provided a presentation to students about social media, and the dangers of social media, and also the internet, and some areas to really be concerned about. There was an evening presentation that we had that evening as well. Wasn't as well-attended as I'd like, but we are going to work to have her come back and do a presentation for the elementary parents, and do another evening presentation. So hopefully, we'll get some, some more information out there for our students and our parents. Very, very good evening program. She was there for almost two and a half hours, and a lot of questions, and I think parents really felt a little bit uneasy after she presented, because of all the information she was sharing, and how dangerous some of these programs can be. I think one of her comments that I was left with is that the technology is evolving very, very quickly, and some of the things that students have access to, they're so new that they really don't, and we don't as adults, even understand the complexities of them, and sometimes you can go down a road that you can't, can't get out of. So it was a good presentation. In addition, early this summer, I received a couple of documents from the U.S. Department of Education, and they had an order form that I could order some of these documents for, for our students. So they had an order, order form that said if you have, like, you know, ten to a hundred or whatever, so it said if you have more than a thousand, send an email, we'll see if we can help you. So I sent an email that said we had about eighty-five hundred kids. I didn't hear back from them until one day Nancy got a big box that said more to come, so we had about fifty-four boxes full of these documents. So we have enough for every family in the district, every kid in the district, and there are two documents which are well-done, and I'll pass them so you can see them. The first one is called NetCetera, and it's chatting with kids about being online. And then the next one is Heads Up, Stop, Think, Connect. So it's really information that I wanted to share with parents. We shared them, we actually passed them out the other night when Ms. Greer was in the district, so just keep an eye, these are coming home. If you didn't get one, you can ask, you can go by your school, and there are plenty of copies. If you want to share them with family members, there are more than enough to go around.
What about an open house?
An open house, they, they are in schools now, so they should be hitting, hitting home soon. Okay? The next issue is, I think, not issue, but informational item, is the, the district Facebook is up. I know many of you have joined. Twitter is up, and Google Plus and Instagram accounts, we have those, and we're really getting a lot of information out there. Great response to a lot of the stuff that we're putting out, and... Uh, great response to a lot of the stuff that we're putting out and a lot of interaction with parents. So, we believe that's, uh, that's moving forward. Uh, nicely. Uh, it's taken a while to get it up, but it's doing, we're really, I think we're reaching a lot more people and we're getting a lot more information. And, you know, to, to Ms. Badger's point earlier, I think that would be a good venue to, to get information to parents. It really seems that Facebook is, and I know that kids will probably tell you that Facebook is where parents congregate and the other stuff is what kids do. So, that's what I'm being told. They can probably set me straight if, if, if I allow them to. So, I, I know that that's, um, we're, we're, we seem to be doing well. Um, the next, uh, item is the box program. I know I introduced that opening day. I've talked to you about it before. We actually had a, a kickoff last week with the training over at North High School and we had about thirty people, uh, uh, that are now box trainers. And also we did, um, a healthy Plymouth Summit over at Indian Pond Country Club, uh, last week and it was well attended. We had about ninety people. Uh, and we were just, um, in, informing the community that we're introducing a program to really, um, help kids, uh, think about themselves and, uh, care a little bit more about their health and start this program in the morning. So, that's kicking off and we'll have the first box, uh, training, uh, district, what, on the twenty-eighth. Uh, last week we met with the town leaders to set the scope for the timeline of budget building. And there are a few dates that I would like for you to put into your calendars because that's, uh, pertinent to the budget process. Keep in mind that our budget hearings are December seventh, eighth and ninth here, um, in our, uh, studio. And also, um, we will invite our, uh, subcommittee for finance. They will be here to, uh, listen to our budget. In addition, uh, there will be a joint budget presentation with the joint boards on January twelfth at, uh, town hall. And keep in mind that that, um, is purely to review the town budget. Uh, the last item I have to report tonight is, uh, just a reminder that Fall Town Meeting is October seventeenth. So, keep in mind that that's a day for us. Uh, we will have, um, a couple of items on that agenda. So, we will definitely review those for you prior to that meeting. So, that's my report for tonight.
Very good. Just to follow up on the budget. So, um, we wanted to make sure that we told the town about the kindergarten, full day kindergarten expenses because we'd like it included in this year's budget.
That, that's, thank you, Mr. Begley for reminding me. Um, the town is trying to put on the radar any programmatic changes or extraordinary, uh, expenses that, that might come up in the budget process. And one of the things that we did, uh, put on the table is that we are going to be looking at our full day K program. And if, um, there are budget implications, our budget will, will contain those costs. So, uh, we met today to discuss an approach for that and, and we will move forward with information for this committee to, uh, look at that budget implication moving forward. So, that will be something to look forward to.
So.
And go ahead, Mr. Begley.
We would need that in a timely manner. So, next week is our next meeting? Is that too aggressive?
It, it, it is. We, uh, we, we need to do some fact finding and we need to do some budget building. So, I would say within next month you will have that information. But we'll, we'll shoot for that.
And we want to include it in our budget. We're not, we don't want to do it as a separate item?
Um, keep in mind that if we need furniture and equipment, it'll come through capital. If we need staffing, it'll come through the budget.
Ah, okay. What, well, um, so furn- furniture and equipment, but also any remodeling?
Uh, absolutely. Absolutely. If there, if there are any adjustments that have to be made.
That would be capital.
We were looking, it, it will be. And we will make sure that those are delineated and appropriately filed in those, uh, categories.
And they would be managed by the building committee?
Absolutely. If needed. I think there's a threshold of, of.
I think we'll probably go over it.
Yeah. So, um, just one last thing and, and I brought invites. I know you'll be getting these, but I brought some invites free for. Okay, you got them. Great. So, if you know that you would like to share one of these with anybody, please let me know. You can take a couple and pass them along to people that you would like to, to invite. All right?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the budget.
Yes.
Uh, you gave us the three dates in December where we'll be meeting about the budget.
Yes.
When will the, um, public hearing be?
January twelfth.
January. No, public.
Excuse me. That will be the following meeting, which I.
After the ninth.
If you tell.
Meeting after the ninth.
I can tell you right now, Ms. Burgess.
Twenty-first.
That will be the twenty-first. Will be the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Where we'll vote on it.
That's where we vote and.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right.
Did you have your hand? I lost track. Any, anybody want to have any comments or anything? Okay. So, then, uh, Dr. Gould, retirements.
Daniel, it's a little early in the season, but we actually do have two retirements that were announced at the end of the summer. Uh, Lynn Benini Dean, a cafeteria worker, uh, from Plymouth North High School, retired August, as effective August twenty-third after seventeen years of service to the district. And Melissa Resnick, a special needs paraprofessional from Nathaniel Morton, retired August nineteenth after twenty-seven years of service to the district.
All right, good. Ms. Badger?
On behalf of the Plymouth School, Public Schools, I'd like to thank these two individuals for their combined forty-four years of service to the district and wish them a wonderful retirement.
Ms. Hunt, correspondence.
Okay. There's one piece of, um, correspondence tonight. I'm going to lose, for some reason my plug is not working today. So, no, I'm going to read quick. There is one, there's one piece of correspondence tonight, an email from the parent of a South High student who graduated last year commending her former vocational, actually she's a North High student, I believe. Um, who graduated last year commending her former vocational teacher Laura Drew on the outstanding task of preparing her daughter, Anna Lisa, for her college nursing program. Mrs. Drew contrasted the preparedness of students, um, from other districts who had participated in A P classes that were not as prepared for the rigor of the curriculum of the classes in college. Mrs., um, it's actually Mrs. Cruz Bianchi, um, said that Plymouth is very lucky to have such a professional enthusiastic staff member who helps her students meet the challenge of becoming a successful healthcare worker.
Very good. Those are good letters to get.
It was a nice letter.
Okay, so now we're moving into the meat of the meeting here. Some new presentations and Dr. Mieses, I know we have the South Elementary School sports field donation.
Yes, I'm going to, uh, preview the presentation and, uh, we have some guests here tonight to, uh, provide the majority of information for this particular item on the agenda. First of all, um, I think many of, of you are aware of the condition of the field behind South Elementary School. I think we've had, um, a, a group in here that, that, uh, actually proposed, uh, fixing that filled up, uh, several years ago and.
Times.
And, uh, several times and it, and it really hasn't gone anywhere. So, um, about two years ago, I had the opportunity to, uh, sit with Mr. Blaisdell and some, um, of the leadership with, uh, the Makepeace Company to take a look at, uh, what could, what we could do to actually turn that field into a community resource. Um, that field right now is used for, um, after Mr. Blaisdell had the field cleared because it had trees growing in it. Uh, he used it for overflow parking, uh, for events, uh, but it really, um, needed, uh, needs a, a significant development and overhaul. So, after talking with, uh, Makepeace and Mr. Blaisdell has been instrumental, uh, working with, uh, our guests tonight to really look at a plan. Um, so they are here tonight to present a proposal, uh, to have the field at Plymouth South Elementary School refurbished. And, uh, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Blaisdell, uh, to Chris Iarty from, uh, Makepeace Company as well as John Amato. So, they're here tonight to, um, go through the plan and we can go from there. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Blaisdell and you can begin.
Thank you for coming, all of you.
Thank you. Um, as the Doc- Dr. Mieses said, um, the field is in pretty rough shape. If any of you have been back there, it, it's really unusable, um, at times. And we have used it for overflow parking because we have a significant parking issue at, at South Elementary as well when we have any types of events and so forth. Um, so we had started looking into how we could get a better field at South Elementary. Um, and Makepeace had worked with the town. Um, when they were early on in the stages, they were working with the town to, with the planning board through all the permitting process. And one of the, the pieces that was in the permitting process was by one, the hundred-first permit, they needed to work on the South Elementary School field. Um, we had met with Makepeace and we had done a walkthrough and, and talked about different things that, that were needed, um, at the field. One was if we were to do this field, we want to make sure we do it correctly. Um, we want to make sure it has sustainability. Um, we want to make sure that when it, when it comes in, that we can irrigate it so it doesn't, the grass doesn't die. We want to make sure that, that any investment that's put into it is, is long lasting. Um, one of the things that I'm sure many field, many schools around have issues with are, are things like motorcycles and we have a, we have a horse and buggy actually that uses the field quite a bit. Um, and so we want to make sure that it's protected as well. So, one of the things we talked about was fencing. And, um, I met with Chris and Tom Berkeley and, and John, um, along, along with Dr. Mieses and, and Mr. Costin. Um, and we talked about all the things that were, that would be needed, um, in this field and, and Makepeace has really listened to us and, and they've worked with John to, to come up with a plan. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to John and John can kind of talk a little bit, unless Chris wants to talk for us to, um, and John can kind of talk a little bit about the, the plan and what it looks like and so forth.
Hello, how's it working?
Is it working?
No.
Hello?
No.
I can yell at you.
We will, we will get it.
Uh, the people at home want to hear you.
Oh, oh, there we go.
There you go.
All right. Um, good evening. My name is John Amato and I'm with J.J. Sports. Um, my company focuses on athletic and recreation design. And that's all we do. I have the benefit of nothing but net, which is nice. Larry Bird said that, I think, with Michael Jordan. Um, ADM Development Services retained me to help them develop a, a plan to improve the field at South Elementary School. And what I want to do is kind of go over, uh, what we propose here. But before we do that, I want to tell you the most important thing we have is we have a fence right here with a gate with a sign that says, "No vehicles allowed." Vehicles are the worst thing for a field. That's how they, you destroy them. It just compacts them and, and destroys them. But basically before you, what you see here, um, and the easy stuff that stands out is the, the soccer field layout. That's a, it's a good, it's a big soccer field for an elementary school. And if we can reduce it, probably makes sense to, to do that. But it's, it's a hundred and sixty-five by three hundred feet, which is a, a nice soccer field for young kids to play on and burn up a lot of energy. On the outside of that, we have a little league sized field and this can be used for little league and softball. Uh, but right now we're showing kind of a little league layout with it, with a diamond inside. We, we developed this so that we could have a real mound and keep that off the field. And that's why I want to show all these lines, a sixty-foot diamond. Um, it'd be nice to be able to, to square this off and make it just little league if you're a baseball fanatic, but we want to be able to handle multipurpose use. Uh, with the field, we have probably one of the, one of the most important things after the protection from vehicles is we have ADA access down to the field. When you improve anything in the state of Massachusetts beyond a certain dollar value, you're supposed to by law provide ADA access. And we have ADA access from the paved area behind the school. I, I believe this is an existing ADA ramp into the school. I may be wrong.
Um, I think it's a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk, but down in the corner here of the paved area, we come down the slope and we get into the field area. The walkway divides off to an area where we could have some kind of maybe timber type seating in a slope. There's a nice slope back in here. So, you can watch a rectangular sports field event. And we also have, the walk also gets you to the baseball area where we have a small area of seating. Um, we, we haven't discussed how much that seating is, you know, how many seats, but for this kind of use, twenty, twenty-five seats is probably enough. You know, you may think that you need more, but it's all, these are, those are details we can work out. We have fencing around the entire field to protect it from, uh, there's a couple of trails that come in. Apparently there's a horse and buggy, a carriage that comes here. We need to protect as well. Um, the ball field has, baseball field has dugouts on both baselines. It has, has an area that I call an on deck cage for the little kids to swing the bat without hitting other kids. Um, it's a, and there's some, some level of, of warning track around the fence. We haven't figured out how far to carry that yet, but it depends on use. Uh, in a nutshell, that's our field. To make it work, we need an irrigation system and there's an existing well. We believe it's an existing well that might be working. And we'd like to take advantage of that. We haven't determined whether it's feasible at this point in time, but we're looking into that to see if we can take care of that. The things that we need to work out that are very important are, are the circulation, the trails that come in. I don't know how they're used in the town. I don't know if there's pressure on the school to maintain access to that. And we may need to provide some circulation outside the fence to allow these trails to continue, but that's, that's a discussion element, uh, discussion item that we need to get into. The schedule for this work, probably, probably more interested in that than anything else, is we want to get through our design work and get into the permitting that we need to do this year before the end of the year and put this out to bid for construction early next year. So, we get good pricing. Pricing it any earlier than, than January next year would be crazy because this year was very, very busy and the prices were fifteen percent higher than normal. So, we want to make sure that, that we do this at a reasonable time. And that's the project in a nutshell. If there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Anybody, yes, uh, Mrs. Betts.
Um, I have two questions. The first question I have is kind of like maybe pre-going into this. I thought we had something going on with a football league with the lights.
Jaguars.
And that never happened. So, are we bound in any contract with them with anything?
Ten to fifteen years, we've had a few, uh, groups and organizations come in, the last of which was the Jaguars.
With the lights from Forges or whatever. Are we bound in any contract with them before we start going in with this? Because that's expired. Okay. That was my first question. The second question I had, Paula, I think you might, might have alluded to it was the bidding process. Does it follow along with what we normally do with our bidding process with the building committee? Mr. Costin?
Good question. Um, we, we had this, um, entire process run through our attorney, a coperman and a page who was also the town's attorney. Essentially what's happening is that this is a donation and a license agreement. And it's similar to what, uh, is used in other communities, Sandwich, Hanover. And essentially we're, we're not bidding the process. We're not providing any funds for this. We're allowing them, uh, through a license to have them, to allow them to use the facility for the construction, uh, making the improvements. And once that is completed, uh, the license expires. It become, it goes, reverts back to totally, um, totally the school department overseeing the property. So, it's not, it's not an issue for a public bidding.
This is like the West Elementary with Mark Wahlberg and the basketball court, right?
On a, on a much longer scale, you're correct.
Larger scale, but same idea, right?
Right. That was a couple of weekends. You're right.
And then.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had two.
Sorry, sorry. One, I guess one last question. What happens when it's done for maintenance?
Well, maintenance is us.
We take care of it, but we have a new sprinkler system. We have.
We're obligated to do some initial maintenance once it's turned over, like to irrigation. If there's an issue, say with the well or there's an irrigation with the sprinkler system, we would be obligated to take care of it.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Badger?
It's fantastic to see the field kind of brought back to when I went to South Elementary. So, it's really nice to see it here. But I'm only bringing it up because you both brought it up. I've been by South Elementary on field day and they're like down Bourne Road, like parked on the. What are we thinking long-term to fix that parking prob- problem?
One of the things, if you swing, if you go by South Elementary right now, you'll notice where our current baseball field is, which you really can't consider it a baseball field right now. Um, we put up a fence across the field and that will become our overflow parking. So, where the current baseball field is, that will become our overflow parking.
Like better placement, actually.
Yes. And because to tell you the truth, a lot of times to get people to go out back is, is a lot of work to get people to go out there.
Yeah.
So, now it will be out front.
Instead of, instead of taking some of the field space, what about in the front there where the trees are by the parking? What if we just expanded the parking closer down towards the street?
We could. That'd be something I'd have to work with, with Arthur Montron and so forth and get some pricing on because I know that would be, I think there's a dully in there as well. And that would take some serious, we'd have to work with the town and so forth about that.
Do we do some due diligence on that one though? Just because, I just want to rule it out because I'd like to keep as much field space as possible without parking cars on it. If we could, if we could get parking somewhere else, squeeze out some parking. Dr. Sorenz?
Certainly irrigation's a critical issue here. If that well is not feasible, what's plan B?
We're obligated, we'd be obligated to put in a well.
Mrs. Burgess?
Yeah. Um, I was concerned about the paths where you had, uh, you don't know where, from who's using it or what. Are they paths that are just developed by people who walk there or?
I, I've actually had the opportunity to walk that, um, property quite a bit lately. And there are paths that run in and out of that field to the south, to the north. Um, so, I. So I think they're used by kids to, you know, cut through to homes. I think they're used in a lot of different, and Adam might have a better idea.
Are they conservation trails?
No, they're not delineated.
You created it with your bike.
I think...
Bends them off, then.
I think what...
And it's not CPC trails or anything like that?
No, no. I think what they're referring to is really is how do we, if we're going to put boundaries around that field, how do we expedite people to get around them without damaging the field or cutting through the field? So if that's a possibility.
But if we launched a few when we're not using it?
To get to Bourne Road, to our friends who lived on Bourne Road, so you cut through the school and you can get to Bourne Road.
The buggy too. She, whoever is running the buggy in there would probably feels that they should still have the right to. They don't, they don't, but...
They don't really have the right now to do it.
Well, I've been through this issue.
You can't damage the field.
They can still think they do and fight you.
Different subject, so...
Yeah, no, no, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about, yeah, the perimeter, yeah.
I also liked your comment because all fields have to be multipurpose fields. So although it's designed for soccer and baseball, all our fields have to be multipurpose, so I'm pleased to see that. And while I have the microphone, I thought, I was over at West School during the summer and the basketball courts, as you know, all turned out really, really nice. And here we have another. I was thinking that perhaps we, if we would have put a plaque on the side of the building and the plaque on the side of this building saying "Fields Donated By", so there should be a permanent recognition of who gave to those fields.
Just so that...
Well, that's against our policy, but...
Well done, let's send it back to the policy committee.
That doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, we tried to get away from that.
Just on that, on that topic, we're working on a ribbon-cutting for that. I'll have a date for you by next week, so, on the West.
For the basketball.
Yeah.
So, does anybody have any more questions or anything? First of all...
Great.
Acknowledged.
Thank you.
Extremely generous, thank you very much. This is, you know, you're good neighbors. So we really appreciate it. We need to vote on this item, so, Ms. Badger, so your hand go.
I was just gonna move that we approve the donation of the field.
I'll second it.
And Mrs. Betts seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Just a follow-up to that. Our council advised us that we would want to have an endorsement from the board's selectmen as well.
Well, I saw that on the document that was attached. That document has to be updated, obviously, because the dates and everything are wrong. It says 2014, for example, and stuff like that. So there are things, I assume our lawyers are going to, now that we vote it, they'll rewrite that or amend it, and you're guys. But why would the selectmen? I saw the selectmen were on there. The selectmen have no authority over the ball fields.
We ask the same question of our, the town's attorney. And the town, for, the town turns over land to the school for school property and school purposes. For the attorney to go back into research when that vote actually took place by town hall, town meeting, would cost more than just simply having a selectman sign off because the selectmen and the town actually turns the land over to the school department.
Which we know, otherwise we wouldn't, we're responsible for the facilities and maintenance of all...
Vice of council.
Yeah, well, I'm not enamored with that council anyway, so... Is that what you guys want? You want to make sure the selectmen sign it as well?
It was brought to our attention last week at a meeting. All we need is approval and we'll get going.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, too.
Tomorrow night.
I think we just gave him approval.
I think we gave him the approval, yeah.
Yes, it's our field.
We're responsible for the school buildings and the fields.
Yeah.
We didn't look for their approval on...
Mr. Chairman, all I can say is what our town council, what our town council said to, what procedures they outlined for us, so...
With all due respect, we voted. Have we voted?
Yes.
You voted.
We voted, it's a vote.
We didn't do that with West.
No, we didn't.
What's the difference between a basketball court and a field?
I think it's an important, there's a separation of responsibilities. And I just think it's important that we... Stick to it.
Probably the reason why council gave that particular guidance was because there's a license that is being granted to turn the field over through the license for the duration of the project and then turn back. That's the only thing that I would say that that would, I'll recommend that.
Didn't we do the same thing for other stuff? Like any of the solar projects and stuff where they're doing construction on our rooftops or other things that we would do on the fields? And we don't get the selectmen involved in that.
We've never done a licensing agreement with the exception of the rooftops at North High School, which we ran and received permission from the Commissioner of Education for that. All of our other solar projects are off-site, so it's not an issue.
Right, I didn't use those as an example, but the one that's physically on our building, we didn't get permission from the selectmen.
Correct.
Are we feeling gutsy or what?
I mean, I can suggest that we contact council tomorrow and just say that's a desire of the school committee to leave it as the vote stands with the committee. I mean, we can do that.
Yep. And then let us hear back right away.
A week isn't going to make a difference at this point.
Good. Sounds good. Sorry, we ended on kind of a negative note.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was listening to the conversation and I lost the second, who seconded the vote? I'm sorry, Ms. Betts.
Mrs. Betts seconded it.
I was paying attention, but at another conversation, so...
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be perfect, yep.
It used to be a really nice field, used to have soccer.
Now we have the transportation contract. Mr. Costin.
Uh-oh, he's going out.
We have a, as you know, we have a five-year contract with First Student, our transportation vendor. We have a two-year, two one-year options. And it's my recommendation that we renew the fourth year of the option, which we're currently in, and move forward for one more year.
Very good.
I'll move that we move forward with the bus contracts for the fourth year.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you.
Now we have the Project Contemporary Competitiveness program.
I'll go and take it and Ms. Gould can, Dr. Gould can follow up on it. We are involved with Project Contemporary Competitiveness. And typically, the superintendent of the participating school district would sit on the board to review policy procedure and applications of students that apply. This is recommended in the event that someone would sit in my, or attend on my behalf. So this provision would allow Dr. Gould to attend meetings and vote on behalf of the district. So basically, it's turning over the rights that I would have to Ms. Gould, Dr. Gould, so that she can recommend and be part of that process.
I didn't see that in the letter.
And what it also does, Mr. Begley, is it gives you, because we also, as a district, because we belong to PCC, we pay a membership fee. And so what it allows, you're allowing me to sit on the board and vote decision-making so it avoids a conflict of interest. It's legal, legalese in a sense. The attorney for PCC recommends that every district does this every year. It just kind of becomes a formality. But it recognizes that you as a body are paying dues for students to go there, but I'm voting. That's really all it is. Every school district that's involved has a sitting member on it.
I didn't see that in this letter, though. The letter that they have here, Section 19, Chapter 268A, is from the point of view of the superintendent. And it's for him to re-up every year so that he doesn't have a conflict of interest. But it doesn't say someone, his designee. It's not looking for approval of a designee.
Right, it's actually just looking for the, acknowledging, you're acknowledging that someone is representing you, superintendent, and voting while the district is paying their dues.
Right.
So you're acknowledging there is no conflict of interest.
And then the other part that you're talking about, that sometimes you may go in his place.
I typically, I'm a little bit, I went to it, I'm a little more passionate about it, so he lets me go.
Right. But they're not commenting on that. That's up to his discretion because we empower him to delegate if he, but that's not what this is looking for.
It's a supplementing document.
So, anyone have any questions? Want to drill down on it? All right, then. Do I have a motion? Don't be shy.
Yep.
I moved that we, I don't even know what I'm moving, that the superintendent or designee hereby serves as a member of the Director of Project Contemporary Competency. I don't know if that was right, but...
Competitive.
Competitive.
Competitiveness. Does Hunt seconded it?
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
I would like, can I just jump in one more time, too? This was our second summer involved in the program and we have doubled our numbers. And I've talked with the students that went this year. I went over, there's a day in the summer that they invite the administration over. And I talked with them and would they be willing to come and sit and chat and tell you about it? And I think I'd like to engage them in that because they're a good group of kids that were over and it's a fantastic program. And it's new to Plymouth. There are districts in this group that have been doing it for years and years and years. It was started by superintendents to give students an opportunity for some engagement academically, but also some social engagement during the summertime. So, and every kid that goes loves it. And we're doubling our numbers and I keep hoping to do that, so...
Where do they go to?
For years and years, it was at Bridgewater State College, the old Bridgewater State College. But then there were some changes there and there were some, they wanted to do some of their own programming. So it was really about five years ago and it was a lot of turmoil because Bridgewater had hosted it for so long. And Stone Hill College invited them over. And Stone Hill has been unbelievable partners with this program. They are probably pretty close to operating at almost a loss to offer this to us. But they take care of the kids, they do a phenomenal job. And it's just an opportunity for kids, either place, I remember myself, to be able to be on a college campus going into ninth grade, you know? That was the first time I had been. And so it's a great opportunity for kids, so...
You got ahead of me on that because, which is good, because it's exactly what I was just about to ask you. Is can you have someone come in and give us an update on this program?
Absolutely, I'd love to.
I heard some feedback that was the opposite of what you just said. And I had, as a parent, some feedback that would concerns of...
From a student that went to the six-week program?
No, no, no. To the one-day thing where they went to Stone Hill and they went on the tour.
That's a different...
That was a different part of this, not related to this?
This is a six-week academic educational thing for incoming ninth graders and 10th graders.
Good.
Only.
Then it's my mistake. I thought it was the same thing.
Because I've never heard a bad word about it.
Because I was like, I was afraid it was going to get on a mailing list and that one-day excursion did turn into something like that.
These are young kids not going into high school. So it's only going into ninth grade or going into 10th grade.
Good, all right. Well, thank you, I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, me too.
Because I had completely the wrong impression of the program then. Thank you.
Good.
Any further questions or anything, comments? Okay. Next one. Now we have a good discussion on the school council election plans. So this is important to us because we discussed this at our retreat. And we want to get into a situation where we're utilizing the intent and purpose of school councils a little better than we have in the past. So, Dr. Myssis, do you want to walk us through the sheet you sent us?
Based on conversation that actually has started over a year ago and actually was a topic of discussion, the summer's retreat, school community retreat, I asked our principals last week to send information in regarding their school council procedures. And there are five items identified. One, is one, are the elections held? If they are up for an election, if they need parents, when is that held, or parents, or staff members for that matter? Where have you publicized the information or the call for parents, call for community members and so on to be part of the school council? The makeup of representatives, so who is, who are these people? And who do they represent? What segment of our population, what stakeholder group? How are you recruiting? So basically, how are you going out looking for people to actually be part of your team? And then I looked for their first meeting date, which is by statute, should be 45 days after the start of the school year, within 45 days. So there are timelines that have to be met and so on. So I collected the information so that you could kind of get a scope of what's out there. So this information is for you tonight.
Yeah, and this was really helpful. I mean, because we suspected that it, you know, ran the gamut from school to school just, but it was anecdotal information until we actually got this. So this is good to have. It's important that we went through the process, though, because out of all of these, I don't think any of them go the way it's supposed to be. So the first thing I think we need to discuss is, first, I think we need to get into alignment with the state requirements. And the state requirements are very clear. And they even lay out how the elections are supposed to take place. So I was going to lean on Ms. Hunt tonight also because by, so the law is Chapter 71, Section 59(c). It's important because it says that "At each public elementary, secondary, independent vocational school in the common wealth, there shall be a school council consisting of a school principal, who shall chair the council, parents of students attending the school, who shall be selected by the parents of students attending such school, who will be, and this is important, who will be chosen in elections held by the local recognized parent-teacher organization under the direction of the principal." So now, all our schools are PTA except one, right? Or is it all of them now?
No, Mannamann Elementary and the high schools are not.
And which one?
And the high schools are not.
And the high schools are not.
But I think they're working on that this year, but they're not.
But they have a parent organization, a homeschool association?
They do, they have a homeschool association. So that's their, that's their PTO.
So those are the ones that are supposed to be running the elections. That way, they could, because some of the comments here was it's hard to get parents' involvement, things like that. That way they could tap into, I mean, I think, I think the legislation was written this way with the acknowledgement that it's a good way to tap into the parents and they have a network.
And that they have a say in who represents them. So it's a vote.
Well, they're a mediator, they don't have a say. They're running the election.
Yeah, but the election is among the people that attend the parent group. It's usually at a meeting.
I read that they were, well, that's interesting. So that's good to have that conversation because the way I'm reading this is they're just establishing the elections for the school. They're acting as, to reach all parents, not just the parents that show up at a PTA meeting.
Right, no, but the parents are the ones that are electing it. So they're, the parents are choosing, the parents of the whole school committee, school community are choosing who represents them on that one.
Yes, okay, so you were saying the same thing. I thought you were isolating it just to the members of the...
Did you, I'm sorry.
So that's good. And then the other part that none of them...
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah. The other part that it seemed was, we were missing on was anything, any school that has a ninth grade should have a student on the school council. I didn't see that unless I missed it. Neither of them have it.
Yeah, they do.
One school committee.
South does.
South does.
South has two students.
Two students, I see it.
North has no makeup of the committee at all.
And I've been, I mean, I've been on the North and they usually have a student.
They do, it's not identified, they do have students.
I've been on three school councils and they all had representatives. I just don't think they do it officially. I don't think it's, it's kind of...
Yeah, they, South, North isn't identified, but they do have students on there.
Right.
For some reason, that...
The president, the class president is usually the person that sits.
I think it's elected.
Not always.
I very rarely have my class president. I very rarely have my class president.
Student council.
Student council usually sends somebody.
So, I always felt that there was, uh, to be an equal number of parents to staff, but it doesn't seem so.
Not equal, no more than staff to parents. Doesn't have to be equal.
Actually, they, right, they tell you the exact proportions.
But when they put down only two parents and all the rest is staff, I think that's pretty overloaded, myself.
Well, that's, that, that can't happen, and that's.
And that's what's happening.
That's not, it is what's happening, but it's not right.
Well, it's not gonna happen again, okay? We're gonna fix that.
Well, I think the way we need to, this is, some, my opinion is, we need to have something, um, policy subcommittee. We need to have something that aligns us with this, some statement that's clearly aligning us with this. Because I think we've been allowing it to function ad hoc, and it's not supposed to be.
That's fine.
No. It's, it's not something that relies on the culture of the school, it relies on meeting state requirements. And those should be consistent across all schools.
Yeah, and in some schools, you don't even have the opportunity to participate.
That's fine too.
Like, you do, but every couple of years, or in the spring, but not if you're a new student, if you, or a new parent, I should say.
The makeup looks like it's okay, for all of them. Yeah, on all of them, it doesn't look like any of them are wrong.
Good.
It needs to be even. Can't be one more than the other. You can have a mis.
Out of proportion, depending on whether they could get enough.
But if they're only sending an email, or is telling you at a spaghetti supper, they're not gonna be able to get many parents.
They do a lot of recruiting. I, I know, uh, being a, a principal in, in two different, uh, buildings, and it is one of the biggest challenges of a building principal, to recruit parents to sit on these committees. So, again, I do believe that the suggestion and the, the policy, the way it's written, or, or the legislation, the way it's written, really works to try to get the PTAs involved, to solicit, to get their involvement, to get people to step up. So I think that, that one of the improvements that we can possibly look at is how do we, I don't wanna use the word responsibility, but put a little bit of ownership on the PTAs to help us to recruit some of the parents. Keep in mind, the dilemma that we have is the same parents are always coming to the table. And I think that becomes somewhat of a, a difficulty for, for the schools.
Yes.
I think it's really important. I, I struggle with this too, because you hear complaints from the community and the parents, and I think it's really important, maybe on our social media, we can write a little blurb about it. This is the one, the one chance, if you do have issues, if you do have concerns, if you do wanna make a change, this is your, even more so than being on a PTA, this is your opportunity. And you just, you know, you hear so many things that are out there that people are unhappy with, then why aren't there more people signing up for this? It's, it's kinda something I, I've struggled with for the last fifteen years, but I think that people need to know, this is their opportunity to have a voice. This is an opportunity to have a say in the structure and the runnings of their school. And I, I just think we need to make sure that people know that that's what this is. I mean, they might hear schools council, and they just might think, oh, just another meeting, but maybe we can highlight some changes school councils have made, or, or some examples. Just a thought.
I'm sorry, I'll just make a statement. Mrs. Betts, I think we wanna really stress that, uh, like, like in the actual fifty-nine C, they're, they're stressing that one of their main purposes is to be involved in the school improvement plan, and to report back to the school committee. And that's something for years, we've always talked about. It's much better than it's been, under, Dr. Miestis has gotten incredibly improved. We've had years where we had one principal, you know, we would just have a principal sitting there, and, and we really weren't getting a school improvement plan, we were getting one person's input. So, um, that has changed a lot. It varies still, school to school, the, the level of involvement. A lot of times you just see staff, and one parent, two parents, so it's not working out, the numbers aren't working out. But I think we, I think we need to really.
Promote it.
Promote it, big time. Mrs. Betts?
I was just gonna say, when people have come to me with issues in the community about, you know, that they wanna, any changes they wanna make in the district, I first ask them, have you talked to your school council about it? Because that's where the, the change is gonna happen. And if you have great ideas, talk to the school council, talk to the teachers at that local school, because that's where it needs to start, before just coming to like, I'm just gonna bring this to school committee. Not that we don't wanna deal with things, and we can, but I think, um, I think making sure that parents know that start with the school councils, because you make effective change in that, um, that environment.
Right. Excellent. So, um, as an action item, I guess, what, coming out of this discussion, what I would like to see is this put on your list, or. And if we could, maybe perk it to the top, so that we could get action. The reason is this, it's, it's very timely, they wanna, you know, these schools are, are ceding these, committing to these councils now. We can, we can emphasize that with them before, you know, in the event that it takes a while to get. But we certainly can put this at the top of the list. Good.
I have another question to ask.
Yep, Mrs. Betts?
Are we gonna make it so it's, it's uniform for each school, so there's, I know, I remember in the elementary school, like, for example, it had, there was an application, and you gave like background information, so if there was a vote to be taken place, I think it would be helpful for probably the, um, the principals if the policy committee, or however it's shaped, has a standard form, so all the elementary schools are doing it the same. So if you move from, you're on the school council, I've been North Plymouth, and let's say you move to the different part of town, and you wanna be on the school council there at another time, you'd be filling out a similar, and the voting process would be similar. So it would be consist, have some consistency, cause I, I'm assuming that there might not be any consistency here.
That's, that's the, I think that's the main thing out of this discussion tonight, I think you hit it right on the head, is we wanna come out with a, this is a district-wide standardization. We keep talking about it, but we don't really put it in policy.
So this is the application form, you wanna be a school council member, this is the form that you fill out. Cause I know in past where, you know, you've had a couple of members, then they're interested in it, then you do have the vote, and there's usually like a little background blurb that's sent out to, then all the parents, and then all the parents then vote on that. And it's not just done in the confines of a PTA meeting. In the, in the past that I've had the experience with at Hedge, it was sent down home with all the kids. And then the kids, um, you know, whether that gets sent back in the backpacks, that vote, or whatever, that gets sent in. But I think having a uniform document that all the schools use for, um, all the school council members, I think would be beneficial.
I agree, and that's, that's something that should come out of the subcommittee when you come back to us, just.
The practicality is, from what I heard Dr. Miestis say just a few moments ago, the practicality is that, that we don't have enough people filling out the forms who wanna be on the council. So I could imagine the way it's evolved is, the principal walks up to a parent and says, oh, by the way, we, we need you on the council. And I think that's how it's evolved, because we.
That's fine, but I would rather have a principal come proactively to Dr. Miestis or ourselves and say, we're not gonna hit this date, because we can't get enough volunteers. But at least we have a uniform way of getting the word out to all the schools, same time, same dates, and everything, so that we can make plans. We wanna get these councils seated, so that we can start, there are eyes and ears out in the community, and we wanna start leveraging that the way it was intended.
And to know how important they are in the whole process, because I, I think that there's, I don't think that they know that, how important it is.
Right.
I don't think the, I don't know, I don't know if they have that information, that how important it is.
I think it, you know, that's a problem we probably caused, because of our, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say inattentiveness to it, but we're paying attention to it now. Let's put it, be positive. Mrs. Burgess first, and then Ms. Badger.
Okay, um, on the community rep, I don't know how they're picked or selected, and I don't, and I wondered then too, how many schools have a community rep?
A lot of them do.
A lot of them do.
A lot of them do.
They're appointed.
The ones that I've sat on.
Yep.
Sometimes there are even teachers that have retired, that, that still wanna stay involved.
But, um, I just, because also, if you're gonna do that, should you have an application process, the same application process probably for them?
Oh, you're doing a good idea.
But because, remember, there's four groups here. You have.
Community generic application.
Parents, staff, students, and community members.
Yep.
So there's four different processes, of how you select each one of those groups in order to, you know, meet the intent of the legislation. So if you guys could drill down a little bit more, then we'll have another discussion when you come back. With some, the art of the possible, and we can drill it down. So, before we get off it though, one of the other things it talks about, this is a little less popular for us, I think. Years ago, our, so as we know, we all have school assignments. Years ago, we used to physically go to all the meetings that you were assigned to. And then, I can remember it was Jane Friedman, uh, year, year, and it's, I'm going way back to two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, I think, where, um, we had a conversation where, um, it was decided, and Dr. Sorenson, I'll turn to you in a second, if you can add anything to this historically, but it started to become more liaison meant, the way we were defining was if they called us, uh, because they had questions, concerns, issues, then we would either talk to them, or go to the next meeting, or whatever. We, we wouldn't go to the meetings, we felt it was putting, like Big Brother was watching. According to this, the intent is for us to be physically there.
Yep.
At all the meetings.
We should be.
And I know we don't wanna say that, but that is what it says, so.
But this.
Well, and I don't want it to depend on the school, that's perfect.
But sometime I think, when, when I'm saying it depends on the school, like, some of them have them at like five o'clock, and it's very, like, if you're working, it's very different.
One has them earlier.
You, you went right to the next bullet, because, just got to the next bullet was, when they meet. So like, we were just talking about, it's hard to get parent involvement. It's hard to get parent involvement, cause we're meeting during the day.
Yeah.
Parents are working. They're working.
So, the same is true for the school committee.
I asked them not to. They're not doing that anymore.
Well, they meet at five, and that's like close enough to be during the day, especially if you're a parent, you work in Boston, that's hard.
So that's, that's another part that we need to look at, and all of us decide how we're going to support that. One thing I would throw in, cause I gave this thought, one other thing we do is, just out of, um, you know, custom, the chairman doesn't get school assignments.
Why not?
Yeah, exactly, why not? So, we've just been doing it, because that's the way we've always been doing it. But I know I don't mind, and I'm not sure if the next chair will mind, and why not? It would, it would spread the load out a little bit better, adds one more person to spread it out to. So that's another thing I would think we would change, uh, so that we could support it better, and, and do it, meet the intent of this legislation.
I think that historically, I used to attend all the school council meetings. And then, I, I kinda got away with it, with, away from it so much, um, with everybody else. First of all, they were working on what they were gonna bring to us, when it got tightened up later in the season, when they only came at the, all at the, in the same basic period of time. And, so it was kinda redundant, because then it was gonna come, and we were gonna hear this on presentation, and hear it again, you know, all this that we've done. So I sort of laid back a little bit on it. But the other thing is, is that, um, there were, there was a handful of principals at the time, just a handful, very few, and, um, but they acted like it was an intrusion when you were there in this school. And, and really that shouldn't be, because, um, the reason why we go into the school is because we are very supportive, and very, even if we go to a music program, or whatever we go to, we're not going to look at and, or bring anything down in the school. We're only going to support and uplift the school. So, I think that, that, that's an attitude that if, if, if it still exists, should change, because, uh.
I, I do believe that was the reason why we did shift away from it.
I think so.
Conversation that people felt like we were looking over their shoulders.
Yeah, well, I.
But I think we're supposed to be in the formation process of the school improvement plans. And how can you be in the formation process if you're not physically there?
Yeah.
If you're just hearing the feedback, they've already made decisions, they already had options, they eliminated options, they came before us with a plan. We should be part of the plan formation.
Some, yeah, sometimes too, it became just the principals thought on what it should be in the school improvement plan too. It wasn't inclusive. I think that we, we made noise about it at school committee meetings, so that now they bring more, so that, some of that got better. But there's still a couple of schools, one in particular, that isn't so good that way.
Yeah, that's not productive, but.
No, I'm not stating anybody. Not, not stating anybody.
Dr. Sorenson, do you have anything that you can, guidance, historical guidance?
It's, as, as I, my experience with it, and my current thinking, is this is, this is something we need to think about pretty intently, the, the school committee needs to think about whether or not our, I know what the regulations say, whether or not our presence at every school council meeting is good for the process. I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it is not good for the process, but I think we need to think about that. And, and, and perhaps maybe, maybe we ought to go to our school council meetings and have a discussion with the council as to whether or not, cause people like to be polite, I wouldn't want them to be polite, I'd rather them to be honest, as to whether or not our presence there helps, or facilitates, or doesn't facilitate the discussion. I'm still not clear on that part of it.
Okay, good. Yes, Ms. Badger?
I know, and I'm sure other people do this way, this way, but Ms. Hunt and I know, we reach out to the principals, you know, in the beginning of the school year, maybe at the end of the year, depending on, um, you know, when we remember who we're assigned to, or whatever. And I know that, I've been to enough of them, that I can kind of tell when the committee itself, you can tell that they're not saying something because you're there. I feel like that, I don't know if it's an open discussion, cause even if you were like, would you like me to come? No one's gonna say, no, we don't want you here, go away. So I think like you can go and you gauge it. I felt like I could really tell, like, where I was helpful and where I wasn't. I mean, there are some school councils that you, you know that everyone feels comfortable to talk, and they give you great, they're, everyone's having great conversations, and in others, you know that when you're there, you're thinking, hmm, I'm pretty sure more goes on when I'm not here. Then, because they, you can kinda feel it, that, or it seems like there's more that's happened in the meeting you missed, or something like that.
I think we can leave it, trust you to read that and figure that out, yeah. But right now, we're not doing it at all.
No, but I'm just saying.
I mean, maybe a suggestion for, for school councils that might feel like that is, you can come, be available, but maybe not stay for the whole meeting. If we have to do that to fulfill the law, then we can maybe approach it that way. Cause I, I do know, like, I have three schools, I send out my email, sometimes I don't hear back at all. And I, I leave it as, if you invite me, I will come. And sometimes I'm always invited. So, it just depends on the school, but maybe we could, for those schools, if you really want us to attend them, maybe we go, we open ourselves up to questions or comments if they want, or support, or celebration, and then we leave. I don't know. Just, just throwing it out there, it's not, I'm not necessarily saying that's what I.
Right, or whatever, yeah.
Mr. Morgan, did you wanna add anything?
No, I, I reached out to my schools as well, and of course, as Ms. Badger said, they all opened arms. I said, you know, if you want me there, or you wanna just invite me where you feel, or sometimes you're here, and all of them said, come, no. So they're gonna say, stay away, so. I guess as, as I maybe attend one here and there, and get the feedback. But it could be like, one meeting, you're welcome, then they wanna tell you stuff, another meeting, you don't know when there's gonna be a meeting where you're not gonna say something, cause you're there, unless there's a certain culture at that school council. That may be so different.
The only way I think I would answer that is, the more you go, and the more they become used to you, and, and all of us, the less of standout you're gonna, you're gonna be part of the team, rather than someone who's coming in to check on the team.
That's right, we're not checking on them.
I think that's just gonna come out of repetition, there's always gonna be people that are gonna be uncomfortable with it, but I see more positive doing it than, than negative. And also, we get an opportunity to see people that are afraid of the cameras.
Right.
Because a lot of times, there are very talented people that come in front of us, that they just clam up when the camera goes on. Or they don't come because of the camera. So it's a good opportunity to see that, who's out there, who's, you know. So it's a good opportunity to see that, who's out there, who's, you know, and try to coach them and nurture them.
In a more casual environment, like, as well.
Yeah, less pressure. Very good. So the action item coming out of this is that the policy subcommittee will review and provide recommendations to us for later review, if not the next meeting, a meeting in the near future.
Next Monday.
Not meeting by next Monday.
Yeah, all right. When do you guys meet next?
A week from Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Week from Wednesday, okay. So that would be October we would meet.
No, we're meeting on the 24th, right, 24th?
Twenty-fourth.
Our next meeting, our next school committee meeting.
Next school committee will be the 5th of October, after the 21st.
That's the groundbreaking, isn't it?
It's over the 5th of October.
Isn't that the groundbreaking for South, the morning?
Twenty, yeah, 25?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I just have one more.
What are you doing, sorry?
Sorry, I just have one more thing. While we're, while we're on this, assignments, last night I just went to the subcommittee liaison assignments, and I totally forgot to mention it, but it, it's not updated, it's 2014, 2015 is the last.
I've seen them on there.
I, I thought it was updated, and then I went to look, and it was...
If you go to the school committee site, oh, see, yeah, but if you're on the public site, it has the last year's.
Oh, you're on the third?
I'm on the school committee, and, because I thought the same thing, too, because I...
No, I pulled it up.
And I pulled it up, and it's today, it was weird.
Well, I resented, I did resend it to you, but resend it to everybody, you have it, because you were on the CC.
There may be a link that's...
Broken.
Okay.
Because I know I've seen it, a link before, so it was weird, so, sorry.
Look at it and see how we can get it. Keep in mind, and we haven't shared this too much with you, but we made an, there was, there's a, an upgrade that was performed on the electronic school board system, so some of these, we're still working out some of the issues with it, okay?
Yeah.
Updates.
That was a good discussion, thank you. So now we're going to move to the superintendent's checklist.
Yes, tonight you have, for your information, a list of items that the Department of Education sends out to school districts, and it has, the one improvement that they made, which Nancy used to do for us anyway, was create a new column for the responsible person in the district who were, who had the responsibility to take care of that particular item or manage it. So this is the superintendent's checklist that we show you every year, it's, keeps growing, and it's, it's a continual challenge for us, but this, this is what guides what we do in the district, and timelines, testing, and so on, it, it's pretty extensive, so. It's for your review, and this is always going to be an electronic school board, so if you ever have a question as to what time of the year a particular task gets done, and who's responsible for it, you can actually get in here, drill down, but this is how we manage it.
I thought it was interesting, I went to the state website to look at this, and I'm sure you, you guys read it, but it made me laugh, I'm, I'm sure it had you rolling. It said, "The majority of activities on the 2015-16 checklist remain unchanged from 2014-15. I would, however, like to draw your attention to a few important tasks due this year." Now, check out the tasks. Educator evaluations, student assessments, national background checks. So there's only three things new, what are you complaining about?
Exactly.
Just turned everything on its ear, but there's only three things new.
They're just huge.
I don't know, I thought that was...
Yeah, there's a lot of comedy going on there, you know?
Anyone have any questions about the checklist before we move on? Then home education plan approval.
Yes, tonight we have, we have four items that are, that you will see in your school committee agenda. We have sample home education plans for the elementary, middle school, and high school, and then we have home education plans for your approval. Tonight, we have eighty-seven plans that are here for your approval. Dr. Halpin has worked diligently to actually get these on the agenda, and one of the things that we discussed many years ago was how do we, how do we consolidate these so that they don't trickle in throughout the year? So, Dr. Halpin and his office has just done a remarkable job to get the bulk of our plans in front of you, reviewed early in the school year, so that we can get them on the agenda early in the year.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the school improve, um, school improvement plan, geez, the home education plan is presented.
And do we have a second? Mr. Morgan seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananous.
This is a competition.
It is a little shocking, though, when you see the number in one...
In one, yeah.
Shot, you know?
I think that's, yeah.
It would be interesting to...
But it's good.
I, I remember Bob Sherman used to give us a chart, over time, that showed it trending, how it was trending.
If he could, Dr. Halpin does that in his...
In his end of year.
Update, yep.
If he could send us one earlier, be good. Just that one.
Not a problem.
Stat. School fundraisers, does anybody have anything about the school fundraisers?
We have a lot.
Clean slate, yep.
I noticed, um...
Ms. Hunt.
Sorry. Um, I, I'm assuming because they're all so new, none of the last two columns have been filled in.
Correct.
But they were put in, you know, a few months ago, how often?
We get them sometimes in the spring for the fall.
Do they? So how much advance notice?
It depends.
Does it have to be before they actually perform it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's policy.
Because I didn't see one on there that...
It may be sitting at, at my desk, this is as of September 8th.
Okay.
You can see on the bottom, my assistant will note when it was last updated, it could be in a pile that's been brought to my attention already, and signed off by both the building administrator and myself, but it may not be on here, but depend on...
Yeah, this one that took place yesterday that I didn't see on there.
Okay, yes, that one.
You know...
At North...
Yeah. So I don't, I just didn't know how soon in advance they had to do it, I was just curious.
If we're talking, we can talk afterwards, but I believe it's the same one, that, yes, I've seen that one.
Okay, okay, good. Awesome.
Good, okay, reports and proposals from committee members? Anybody have anything they want to report tonight? Alumni, maybe?
What did you say?
Alumni, maybe?
No, we haven't met.
Always, always.
Always.
I'm waiting.
Okay, everything that I've done, actually, Dr. Maestas has talked about, but I did want to congratulate you again for an amazing opening day ceremony that I was lucky enough to go to. It was, it was great. So, once again, I think our teachers are really lucky, and I, I say every year that those brand-new teachers that walk into the standing ovation that don't know what hit them, I'm sure, and then Mr. Costin was the star of the show, so, it was great, so...
He's a legend.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to follow that comment up, because one of the things that I thought was quite outstanding is that we're a very big district, huge budget, thousand employees, but we created the feeling of family, and it was done very, very well.
Yeah.
It seemed, felt very informal for all those new employees coming into the district, it just felt like we all know each other.
Absolutely.
Very, very well done.
It's a good first impression.
And can, can I just jump in a minute? The funny thing of that is, when we, we started that, I don't even know how long ago, but what the best part of it was, no one tells the veteran teachers to stand up and give them a standing ovation, but invariably, it happens every single year, and I think, they get blown away, the new teachers truly get blown away by that, but I think it makes a difference. Simple as that, is they're welcomed, that act welcomes them.
Absolutely.
Bring Mr. Costin on stage. I don't know, I, I truly mean that sincerely, it created such a nice atmosphere, you didn't even do anything, you just stood there.
That's what I do every day. She never told anyone she was doing it.
That's what I deal with.
That was great, we do it right, you guys do it right, so, congratulations.
Always has a great student.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting, I want, I wanted to see, because I, I say this every year, every year you top yourself, and I know that's a lot of pressure, but every year it's great, how about, just leaving it at that. But I went back and I looked, and they're all posted, all the programs are posted, we have them all, and going back to 2011, that's, and everything you come up with is just very, very perfect, I mean, it's just...
Yeah, I'm losing my hair, too, so.
Feel that pain, right.
Then, oh, sorry.
Dr. Sorenson had a thought there.
On, on a completely different topic, with the new change of schedule at the secondary schools, I had a conversation with one teacher, and this is not a complaint by any means, just an observation, and it kind of fits my concern about time on task. We have, classes don't meet every day now because we have four in a day, and then we do district-wide measures. So what happens is, you have a class for your first day of school, and then the next time you meet that class, you're doing DDMs, and then you'd have two classes of DDMs, so now it's almost two and a half or three weeks into the school year before you can actually start a major piece of your curriculum. So some teachers are feeling, at least one teacher, now this could be others, feeling a little bit like, it's difficult to start something critically important on your second class, then have two DDMs, and then have two more days before you see that class again. So they figured in the calendar, this one particular teacher figured in the calendar that this teacher would not be able to start anything until the 18th of September in earnest, because of the way, now, not as a complaint, but I bring it up as a continuing, the raising of our consciousness about, we have a curriculum that we have to fit into 172, 182 days, and we never get anywhere near 182 days. And the, and the new schedule is complicating that even a little bit more. I don't know what we can do about that, because we have to do the testing.
It goes back to the superintendent's checklist, I think.
No, there were just a couple more things that I attended, but, like I said, Dr. Maestas talked about them, the, that internet safety, I went to the parent presentation, and it was, it was amazing, and I, you know, you think you know everything there is to know about social media, and both of my kids got a chance to see it in the school, and they, they both learnt some things as well, and again, it was very frustrating to not see the room full. I attended the Healthy Plymouth event at Indian Pond, and that was exciting, and I think this box program that's coming looks really exciting, and I've had some teachers tell me that they've, you know, they're the ones that are signed up to do it, and they're excited, and they can't wait, and I think that's wonderful, and I guess that's it.
Ms. Badger?
I have my usual, our next Alumni Association meeting is September 17th, so that's this Wednesday, Thursday, yes, Thursday at 6:00 at the RE/MAX office in the Bennys parking lot. We've had a, we had a great August meeting where Elson Redding came and told us a little bit more about the biomedical, and I think we're really starting to take off in that we have something to focus on and try to figure out how we can help the schools, and so, everyone should come, it's fun, sometimes there's food, not all the time, just sometimes. And then my next item is, next week, and I'm just going to give you a little teaser, but next week we're going to, a lot of the kids that went to Japan are going to be here, tell you a little bit about it, but we had a phenomenal time, and we are one lucky town to have a sister city like Shikama, this, it was amazing. That's it.
I thought we were going to have it tonight, actually.
We were going to, but there's a lot on this agenda, and they're going to be at the selectmen's meeting next Tuesday, too, so we're going to do Monday, Tuesday, so it's not going to be spread out for the parents and the students.
Very good, I'll follow up. Were the floods anywhere, not while you were there, but the floods last week, it was north of Tokyo, and it, and it was near the nuclear power plant, that I was beginning to wonder.
I sent a message to one of them, but it, I think it was in the same basic area, because I looked on the map, but they didn't get back to me, so...
I haven't heard anything.
They're quite a bit north of that.
I think I can find out something.
It was north, yeah.
It's more north, that was only 30 miles north of Tokyo, but we're four hours by.
It's like, really far. But the band, when you looked on the line, went kind of, I think it was lighter rain, but...
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll go on to the building committee?
I didn't get to the last meeting.
Since our, our last meeting, which was quite a while ago, the building committee had one meeting, and there are just four items, and I'll go in them real quickly, starting probably with the least important to the school committee, is the Sims House, it continues to be going ahead with refurbishing, and which, the building committee and the town is trying to avoid the procurement laws, because there's so many specialized contractors that have to be involved in that building, so they're working on that sort of thing right now, and there'll be an owner, project manager appointed, in fact, there were five, there were five applications, Ted Gentry was one of them. Moving to the Harbor Master Facility, which is being proposed now for sort of the west of the boat ramp, all the way up at the end of the parking, parking lot, kind of near East Bay, in the grassy area up there, the only money involved in right, that now has been the planning, that'll have to go before town meeting, but that's going, moving ahead, we've got a design for the building, so on and so on. And now a town hall, the general contractor bids will, and the sub bids are being taken care of this month, so that'll be the 14th for the subs and the 28th for the general contractor. And finally, to Plymouth South High School, I was leaving the building the other day, and I heard the unmistakable sounds of a bulldozer, bulldozer, so I ran around the back of the building to see what I could see, but I couldn't see anything, it's so well fenced off. In fact, the student representative made a comment tonight, "I think there's work going on out there, but you really can't see it." Well, what has happened out there is the top layer has been removed, and it's now down to virgin soil, GeoTech has come in and, and checked what they checked, looking at virgin soil, and said it's appropriate, so now the backfield will come in, and the actual foundation work is going to start the end of this month, so in a couple of weeks, we're going to be seeing foundation work. And as we know, the, oh, I have a little show and tell, we, we have the groundbreaking coming up, so I want to show you a picture...
That's awesome.
...of, of the last groundbreaking at Plymouth South High School, my five sons, this was the groundbreaking for Plymouth South, two of them are now teaching.
We're going to stage that picture all over again, so can we, except for one of them can't make it, right?
Yeah, we couldn't get them all there, but, the ones that are teaching there, so it will come.
That's great.
Restage the picture.
Restage the picture.
Restage that picture, makes me feel old.
So that's it, that's the report.
Very good, thank you. Dr. Ghul, appointments, leaves of absence?
This is where we take off tonight, no, we, I would certainly think, this is where I'm very happy I don't have to read all of the names again. We have 57 certificated appointments, 36 classified appointments, we have one short-term maternity leave of absence, one unpaid leave of absence, and we have eight resignations. But as you saw from the first day, that 57 is accurate and then some.
Yes.
And then some.
And then some. Accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger?
All right, whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S091715 dated September 17th, 2015, in the amount of $1,879,667.26 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
That was a die.
I've got two. Ms. Hunt, I'll take Ms. Hunt. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Ananous, next one.
All right, whereas school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and transfer transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant S082015 dated August 14th, 2015, in the amount of $619,136.66 as presented.
Mrs. Badger, seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Now we, we don't have the minutes, so we're going to do those next Monday. And then we have obsolete books and materials, so we have South Elementary, PCIS, and Cole Springs, so, Dr. Maestas, do you want to...
Yes, I'm moving through the agenda items real quick, hold on one second. Yes, tonight we have books at South Elementary, South Elementary that are no longer in use, and they are a number of books dating back to 2001. And there are a number of, um, books dating back to two thousand and one and as early as two thousand and twelve. And these books are no longer in use.
Do I hear a motion?
Move the recommendation administration.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Enamis.
Hold on a second, we have Ms. Burgess, correct?
Yes, seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Next one was PCIS.
Next, we have PCIS, disposal of books. And we have a number of books that are on the list at PCIS from nineteen seventy-six to two thousand. And these, uh, books are no longer in use.
I'll move, Mrs. Burgess moves it.
Second.
Dr. Sorenson seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Enamis. Coal Spring.
Yes, Coal Spring, disposal of books. We have a number of additions that are out of date, dating back to nineteen ninety-three and as early as two thousand and seven. These books are no longer, um, in use and they're outdated versions.
Ms. Badger moves it?
Yes.
Mrs. Betts seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Enamis. Very good. This was a productive night and, uh, we had a productive night, good conversation, and we ended early.
Sounds good. Can't lose with that.
South is winning, I heard.
Oh, really? What's the score, you know?
No.
Can't just give you part details.
Yeah, yeah.
This part.
So, uh, then the school committee is adjourned at eight fifty-one.